All right. Thanks, everyone, for your patience while we work out these little snafus. I'm gonna be covering wide number of topics here, starting with the legal authority for planning and zoning, kind of that constitutional underpinnings of it and limitations on planning and zoning authority. Then talking a little bit about planning and zoning in Maryland, different types of zoning actions. What are the limits of using those? And then I'm going to go on and talk a little bit about government ethics. I'm sure everyone's favorite part of this program. I'm going to start off by asking, has anyone ever heard of the Tenth Amendment before? You know, it's not one of your, it's not one of your household amendments, you know, the first or the second or anything like that, or even the fifth, taking the fifth, we all know about that. The Tenth Amendment, though, is probably the most important for planning and zoning because it is the source of local zoning power. And what the Tenth Amendment does is draw the boundaries between what the federal government can do and what states and localities can do. And it reserves the police powers, power, you know, police authority, public health authority to the states and localities. You think about how this plays out in practice. We have local and state police forces. We don't have a federal police force. We have the FBI, but they're not patrolling the streets. The police is a state and local authority. Same way with public health. When we've gone through the COVID pandemic, it was the states that were imposing, you know, restrictions on gatherings and what have you. The federal government didn't have that authority. And that all flows from the Tenth Amendment. Now, that's important because one exercise of police power is the zoning power. And this can be traced back to the Euclid case from 1926. This was a situation where a town in Ohio was, you know, trying to say, well, we're going to divide up the area within our town. There'll be residential areas here, industrial areas here, what have you. And someone who was zoned in a residential area said, well, hey, I want to, I want to run a factory. I want to build a factory here, and you can't tell me what I, you know, what I can do with my property. Challenged it all the way up to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court upheld the state and local land use authority as a reasonable exercise of the state's police powers. Now, the court was clear, though, in saying that that doesn't mean that every site-specific application of zoning authority is constitutionally permissible. Just that it is permissible for states and localities to zone and plan for development within their boundaries. Now, this is where we get into the big limitation on planning and zoning authority and things like how those authorities are implemented with respect to specific properties. And that's the takings clause of the Fifth Amendment. Now, you see the text of it there on your screen. "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." Really short clause, but more than half of those words are the subject of dozens of Supreme Court decisions. This is a heavily litigated area of the law that has very few bright lines. It's really difficult to know what it means to have property taken without just compensation. Now, there's lots of issues here, as you can tell from the blue highlighting. We're not going to talk about just compensation, what constitutes that. We're not going to talk about what qualifies as private property for purposes of the takings clause. We're going to focus on what constitutes a taking and what is a public use. Now, there are three forms of takings. There's just garden variety eminent domain. That's where the government says, I'm taking your backyard to put a road through. We all know that. They got to pay you for it, but the government can do that. Then there's regulatory takings, as its name suggests. That's where the government regulates property to the point that it's been deemed a confiscation, and the government has to pay for it. And there are also certain types of exactions that come up in the land use process that we're going to cover here as well. Like I said, you're familiar with eminent domain, roads, parks, other things like that. You're probably not going to have to deal with that so much as a planning commissioner. That's really what, you know, the state highway administration does. Maybe your local Department of Public Works might have some experience with that, but I don't think it'll really come up in your world very frequently. One thing that does, though, come up is what is a public purpose? Now, there are, in the planning and zoning area, the two biggest cases deal with urban renewal-type projects. So in 1954, the Supreme Court made clear in the Berman v. Parker case that if you've got a blighted area that's, you know, lots of crime, lots of dilapidated houses, there are fire risks, what have you, that it is a public use to take all those properties, you know, confiscate them and raise them and put in some other, you know, municipal project that will eliminate the blight and presumably advance, you know, the municipality's goals. Then, about 15 years ago, the Supreme Court took another step by saying it doesn't even have to be blighted property. Even if the properties are fine, the government can still take them if they want to turn those properties to a more productive economic use. So the case involved some residential houses in a town in Connecticut that were along or close to the waterfront, and the government, the town wanted to create a big kind of economic commercial center, mixed use, but these houses were in the way, the proverbial person who refuses to sell to the government. And they took Ms. Kaloe's house, and it was challenged up to the Supreme Court, and the court held that 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 type of urban renewal, even if it's not blighted, is a public use because it increases the tax base and increases the amenities available in the municipality. All of that is a public use. Warning. My guess is that if a similar issue were to come up before this court, they would come out the other way. So this is kind of the high-water mark of most deferential case when it comes to defining what is a public use. I think that'll probably be rolled back a little bit in the future. Now, the real thing, the most important thing for all of you when you're talking about planning and zoning authority is what constitutes a taking. Now, and what constitutes a regulatory taking. As the slide shows, this type of taking was virtually unheard of when the nation was created and for like the first 150 years thereafter. And why is that? It's because when we first were starting out as a country, there wasn't an awful lot of government regulation. What there was was to really stop a really bad health outbreak or to maybe knock down someone's house when there was a fire coming along and they had to create a fire break. There wasn't a lot of environmental regulation. It wasn't a lot of land use regulation. Wasn't a lot of economic regulation. So regulatory takings as a concept just didn't exist. It was first recognized in 1922 in the Pennsylvania coal case. And the court there, this was a case involving a Pennsylvania rule that said you had to leave coal in place underground, even if you owned it, if it would result in subsidence on the surface, subsidence on a residential property. And it went up to the Supreme Court with the coal company saying, hey, we own this coal, and this locality is telling us we cannot mine that coal. The court ruled in favor of the coal company. And it made the point, you know, during the case, the government said, well, wait a minute. This is, this is just a core exercise of our police power. We've always regulated in favor of the public health and public safety. Well, people's houses might fall into the ground. And the Supreme Court said that basically, the problem is, is that the concept of police power is too flexible. It covers too many things. And the quote here is, "The natural tendency of human nature would be to extend the qualification" that it qualifies as a police power, "more and more until at last private property disappeared." So the Supreme Court is saying here, it's no longer good enough, government, to come in here and say, we're exercising our police powers, therefore there can't be a taking. The court is now going to start saying, okay, when you're regulating property, we're going to look at it and see whether it constitutes a taking, even if you're not confiscating the property outright. Now, the question is, how do you define a regulatory taking? The court's shot at it in 1922 was this. While private property may be regulated to a certain extent, if regulation goes too far, it will be recognized as a taking. That's it. Now, that's not really a standard at all. Question in the back? Oh, yeah, okay. So it's not really a workable standard. The question then becomes, how far is too far? That question was decided in 1978, a case involving a proposal to build on top of Grand Central Station in New York City that was denied on the grounds that it would compromise the air rights of the surrounding properties. The property owner sued. It went up to the Supreme Court, and the court tried to, you know, articulate, what does it mean to go too far? And they started applying this ad hoc, multi-factor test that looks at the economic effect. That should be an E in effect, economic effect of the government action, reasonable investment-backed expectations, and the character of the government action. What those mean are economic effect of the government action. How does it really affect property values? Is it rendered valueless, or is it just a slight inconvenience? Reasonable investment-backed expectations. Did you buy the property knowing that this restriction would be applied to you, and so you bought it at a discount? Well, then you wouldn't have a reasonable investment-backed expectation. But if you paid full price for this property and this restriction on your ability to development comes out of the blue, well, then you do have a reasonable investment-backed expectation. And the character of the government action is a kind of a loosey-goosey thing that really comes down to, what does it look like? Is this government regulating for public health and safety? Or is it government really trying to get you to give them something without you having, or without them having to pay for it? Now, this proved to be a very difficult standard in two ways. First, it was, there was no bright line rule. This ad hoc test, you could rarely tell in advance how it was going to come out, and it was not particularly favorable to landowners. So the Supreme Court created two, what are called per se or categorical takings. And these are important for you, the second one more than the first. The first one, though, is the Loretto case, and this stands for the proposition that when the government regulation constitutes a physical taking, then it's an automatic taking. You don't have to look at any of the factors. The government has to pay compensation. The specific example in this case was New York City required owners of apartment buildings to put cable boxes on the side of their building in order to provide cable service, not only to that apartment building, but it was part of a network to go throughout the city so that residents could get cable service. But they required, it was like a three-foot-by-three-foot box on the side of the apartment building. That constitutes a taking because it is the government saying, you have to let someone else use that piece of your property. You can't use it anymore. That box is there. Now, the compensation is going to be small, but it is a taking. And if you've got all these apartment buildings that have these boxes, well, the compensation adds up. But again, you know, that's probably not going to come up much in the land use context. This one is the one that comes up all the time. The Lucas versus South Carolina Coastal Commission case. Taking occurs on a regulation denies a landowner of all economically viable use of land. Now, this case arose from a gentleman who owned a beachfront property in, I think it was Isle of Palms, South Carolina. And South Carolina enacted an ordinance to prohibit development waterward of literally a line in the sand. And the purpose of it was to protect the island from hurricanes and protect the dunes that also protect against hurricanes. So it was an effort to preserve the natural ability of the beach to absorb the impact of hurricanes. But Mr. Lucas's lot lay waterward of that line in the sand. So all of a sudden, he was not able to build on his property. The two lots on either side of him had been developed prior to the law was enacted. So there he was with an empty, unbuildable lot with two big-time multimillion-dollar houses on either side of him. And he went up to the Supreme Court, and the court ruled that it was a taking because it denied him all economically viable use of the land. The court said, well, yeah, sure, he could camp on it. Yeah, he could put a chair on there and look at the beach. Oh, that's good, but that's not economically viable use. Now, as it's been applied over the years, it means both economically viable use or all value, but it has to be all. So a diminution of value by itself is not enough. And I'm talking about, in order to establish a taking in this area, you have to show like 95% diminution of value. If it's 80%, you're probably not going to win. So it is an extreme case, but if you fall into that category, it will constitute a taking no matter what. And people, takings plaintiffs, will do everything they can to try to fit their case into one of those two categories, as a physical taking or a categorical taking. Question in the back? Yes, the question was, who sets the value when you're determining what the diminution of value is? The owner or the taker? That is heavily litigated. I mean, both sides come in with experts to value the property both before the restriction and after the restriction. And the court has to decide which one the court thinks is most, you know, most appropriate. Arguably, yes, but if you're the property owner, you probably don't want the government to be the one defining what your property is worth. Yeah, so you want to be there in court with your experts saying, you know, it's worth a million dollars, not a half a million dollars. Yeah. I think that's a fair point. Question? It is, it is fair. It is fair market value, but experts can disagree a fair bit about what fair market value is. There's also a lot of questions about what assumptions that go into the determination of fair market value. Are you looking at, I want to build a, you know, a high-rise hotel here versus I want to build a residence? Are you entitled to base your value on the highest and best use? Or something less than that? And lawyers and experts fight over that issue all the time. And, you know, there's, again, the theme in takings litigation is that there aren't any bright line rules. There's no way you can just kind of go to a book and say, yeah, that's the value of this property. Another question? The question was, have, and I'm going to try to wildly simplify this. Have I ever seen a situation where there was a taking arose as a result of the extension of local restrictions on wellheads? Of land to create wellhead area? Yeah. I mean, if you're talking about, and maybe I'm not getting the question here. Are you talking about acquiring land in order to have a wellhead? Yeah, I mean, whenever you're acquiring land, you have to pay for that. Where you get takings in this context with some frequency, I mean, not frequency, but it happens where the government denies, say, a building permit for a lot because it is only eligible for onsite septic and, or not onsite septic. Well, actually, yes, onsite septic, or if there's no water available on the property. Let me back up. I am talking about septic here, so maybe it's not responsive to your question. So to go back to your question, yes, if you're going to acquire property, you have to pay for it, but I'm not sure if just extending out land use designations in order to preserve the natural state of area around wellheads so that, you know, that, you know, you get clean water coming out of those wellheads, that can constitute a taking if someone is deprived of all economically viable use, but not otherwise. But maybe we can talk about that afterwards. I think I'm not quite getting your question. Well, the follow-up question is, what happens if the locality needs to spray irrigate in order to dispose of, you know, sewer effluent? Yeah, and if you're spray irrigating private property, sure, that is going to constitute a taking. Or you can acquire the property and spray irrigate, but you can also get, you know, work it out with a landowner and pay them a certain amount of money to allow their property to be spray irrigated. That happens. You have to, I mean, you have to work things out with MDE as well. They're active in the spray irrigation world. But whenever the government is doing anything on private property, putting anything on it or acquiring that property, they're going to have to pay for that. What we're talking about here is regulating, where the government is not really putting a finger on your property at all. It's just telling them, telling you what you can do with your property. That's where you get a regulatory taking. Do you have a question? There are federal statutes that have been enacted to allow someone to seek their legal fees when their federal constitutional rights have been violated. And this would constitute a violation of their rights under the Fifth Amendment, which is that their property shall not be taken without all right. So now, as I finished up in the last slide by saying that people try really hard to fit themselves into either of these takings categories. That leads us to a discussion of partial takings. Now, this is, imagine this hypothetical. You've got a 100-acre parcel, and 20 acres of it is wetlands. And the Department of the Environment says, you can't build on those 20 acres. So you then say, all right, I'm going to bring a takings claim and say that you took the entirety of that 20-acre corner of my property. And so it is a total take because it's got no value. I can't do anything with it. The courts say no. What they look at is the entire parcel as a whole and not just the little bit that is restricted by the governmental regulation. So in that circumstance, you'd have 100 acres, 20 acres are unbuildable. You'd only suffer about a 20% diminution of value, and therefore you would not have a taking. Now, so because those categorical takings boxes are hard to get into, most cases are still determined by that Penn Central ad hoc, multi-factor balancing test that's pretty favorable to the government and also very difficult to predict going in. All right, I want to move on to exactions, which is also a form of taking, but a little bit different. An exaction is an affirmative condition placed on the receipt of a permit or a special exception or other type of land use authorization and can amount to a taking in certain conditions. There are two requirements that flow out of two Supreme Court cases. One is that there be a rational nexus between the governmental restriction and the private project and that there be rough proportionality between the impact of that project and the burden placed by the governmental restriction. The first case is Nolan versus California Coastal Commission. As you can see on the slide here, the Nolans owned a piece of property that lay between, along a beach, and they wanted to expand it. California said, well, we're concerned that if you expand your house, people going down the street are not going to be able to see that there's a beach there. They're not going to be able to know that there's a place of, you know, they could go down, enjoy the water and what have you. And so they imposed a condition on the permit that would allow them to build the property. And that condition required that the Nolans allow people to traverse on their portion of the beach back and forth. So in this instance, the court struck that down because the court said, hey, the concern you have, government, is about blocking the public's view of the beach. But the condition you're imposing is down on the beach itself. It has nothing to do with people walking down the road and knowing that there's a beach over there. So the court concluded that there was no rational nexus. Those are just two different things. You're essentially using the permit requirement to exact this other concession from the property owner. The next, well, we've already done that. The next case is the Dolan versus City of Tigard case, and this is the one that established the rough proportionality requirement. It was someone who was expanding a store, and the expansion was going to have some impact on storm, the flow of stormwater on the parcel. So the government required them to do some onsite stormwater mitigation, you know, stuff that we see all the time in the development world, and required them to dedicate another parcel of property that they had to create a public greenway that could also handle stormwater during flood events. So both of them were designed to help with stormwater and offset the impact that the development would have. The court struck that down, too, on the grounds that what you're already doing onsite stormwater mitigation, this other requiring them to dedicate a different property to public use for a greenway, yes, it does improve stormwater management, but it's going way for a greenway, yes, it does improve stormwater management, but it's going way, 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 way beyond the impact of this particular project. So the court said that that was not, you know, roughly proximate or proportional to the impact of the project itself and struck it down. Now, this does not apply to, you know, general, you know, tax and impact fee structures, things that legislative action. We're talking about property-specific impositions almost always as conditions to a building permit, a subdivision permit, something like that, that is property-specific. All right, that's the takings clause and its exactions relative. And I want to move on, say, a couple of words about equal protection. This one you might be familiar with. It's the constitutional provision, the Fourteenth Amendment, that lay behind the Brown v. Board of Education decision in 1954, which barred segregated education throughout the country. Now, what the equal protection clause says is that you cannot treat similarly situated properties differently, or people differently. So the challenge in the land use context is that basically all you're doing is classifying property. You're distinguishing property all the time. You're drawing lines and saying this is going to be a residential area, this is going to be an industrial area. That type of classification immediately raises equal protection concerns because a landowner can say, hey, we're both landowners. You're telling me I have to build a residence. You're telling this other person over here that they can build a Walmart. Now, that's not fair. You're not regular, regulating equally. Now, that turns out not to be a problem for land use because the Supreme Court has developed a very deferential body of law in this area, and it provides that so long as you are not classifying based on race or gender or religion or something that is a suspect class or not, just not classifying based on the exercise of a fundamental right. Like, you know, you're a Republican, so you can build one house on your lot, Democrats can build 10. I mean, that, you couldn't do that. When you, when a government tries to distinguish based on suspect class or on the exercise of a fundamental right, the court applies a strict scrutiny standard that is nearly always fatal. But if you're regulating just because this, we think the impacts of industry is different from the impact of residents, common sense thing, as long as that has a rational basis, you're going to be fine. And so almost all land use and planning decisions is going to have a rational basis because you're distinguishing between different uses because of their impact on the surrounding area. So that is typically going to be upheld. You only get into trouble when you start kind of straying into the suspect class area. And that's what I was going to say there. So now let's, we're going to move on and talk about planning and zoning in Maryland. Does anyone have any questions about the taking stuff before, or the constitutional stuff before we move on? Yes? It should be the same. It's going to be, it's going to be what they call just compensation. And, but again, that is heavily litigated as to what that means. Usually it's, I mean, it should be fair market value, but again, the two sides will fight tooth and nail over what that fair market value is. A lot of the litigation that the State Highway Administration does in this context is our fights with the landowner over how much the state has to pay to put a road through their backyard. No question that the state can put the road there. The only question is how much they have to pay. Got a question up front? Shouldn't be, because they'd be able to develop the property with a 250-unit apartment building, and that's going to give you some economically viable use of your property. You'd be in this diminution of value realm where they'd be saying, well, if it were not for this restriction, we would build a thousand-unit apartment building. And that might be, you know, a 75% reduction in the value of the property, probably not going to be enough. There's often legislative efforts in this area to define what is an actionable diminution of value for purposes of takings. None of that legislation has gotten very far here in Maryland, but they do get advanced in some other states. Question in the back?
Just let me add.
Did I not, did I not?
Keep in mind, APFOs are intended to regulate the pace of growth, not restrict growth. So in the case of if in that subdivision or that development you had, that they, to avoid the APFO trigger, they may choose the 250 units. But if they wanted to build to the fullest extent and they triggered the APFO, they wanted to go to 1,000 units, they could do that, but the infrastructure needs to be adequate. So they may have to wait to actually upgrade the roads or the transportation to do that. So again, the APFO doesn't preclude the development even when it's triggered. It just means that the infrastructure needs to be planned for and installed either as part of that development or, so often the issue is schools. So schools shut down areas for a while, but the state and the local government worked together often to put in a new school and they redistrict to accommodate and open that area up. So it may be closed down for a period of time, but that doesn't mean it's closed down in totality. So I just wanted to draw the distinction of what the APFO does versus it doesn't do in that respect.
Yes, a question in the back? Yeah, that would, the question was, you know, how would the takings clause be implicated by the widening of I-270? Would it be an exercise, would it be eminent domain or regulatory taking and exaction? You know, if, if the government is widening that road and saying, we need a part of your front yard to put this road in here, or the shoulder, or what have you, yeah, the government would have to pay for that and pay fair market value, just compensation. And sometimes, I mean, oftentimes, the parties can negotiate that and reach an agreement as to what the appropriate amount is, but oftentimes not. Question in front here? In my example, it would be correct, where you buy the 100 acres when 20 acres of it is wetlands, but for a variety of reasons, that would not be a taking. But if you, if there's a 20-acre piece of property that is entirely wetlands, okay, and you bought it and the government said, well, you can't, you can't build on that, that's a harder question. The Supreme Court addressed a case that's sort of like that in the mid-'80s and concluded that you could bring a taking because really the person who sold you the property, you know, you presumably bought it for a discount, and the person who sold it to you is the one who's getting the short end of the stick, but it does, because they presumably bought it at some point when it was not subject to the restriction, the restriction was imposed. And so the court kind of looked at landowner as a continuous thing. The landowner at some point bought this, and then the government, then the restriction was imposed, and the fact that it changed hands doesn't mean that the government is off the hook. That only applies, though, when it's a total take. If it's part of a larger property, 20 acres out of 100, the fact that the court is going to look at the whole 100 acres and apply those three factors, one of them being reasonable investment back expectations, if the fact is that you bought it at a deep discount because you were aware of the wetlands in the corner, that's going to weigh heavily against you, as will the impact of the government decision on your property because of, we're only talking about 20%.
And you may want to talk about, in this respect, I think there's a recent lot merger, Supreme Court decision in terms of the transfer of sale property within, actually, the family, that they knew that when they, they were taking it over the property, they knew that they actually didn't have as many lots as they thought they were. And so the regulations had changed at the local level so that you needed both the lots to make a legally conforming lot. And in fact, the Supreme Court ruled in that case, they, they knew when they owned the property that they really didn't have that extra value. They thought that they, oh, well, I have actually two lots on my plot, but the regulations say I have to have used both lots to make a legal lot. And they thought, oh, why, oh, no, I can sell this one. Supreme Court said, no, you knew when you bought that property that in fact there's were only two lots, that's two lots made one for, for a legal lot. You didn't lose any value as a result of that case. And I actually remember the citation.
Yeah, that was the Muir case, Muir versus Wisconsin, and it was written by one of the increasingly fewer, more liberal justices on the Supreme Court. Whether that decision comes out the same way now, hard to tell. Another question over here? I, I mean, if we're talking about if the state wanted to do, like when we're talking about a highway, putting in a road. Well, I mean, eminent domain doesn't affect zoning. You know, whether that project would be squared with the comprehensive plan or the local zoning requirements would be a separate issue. The taking would only arise if it, you know, surmounted, it qualified and could be built and the, and the government was moving ahead with the project and taking the property. If they can't build it as a result of zoning and planning restrictions, you wouldn't even get to the taking. So I think that's an independent limitation on what the government could do there that wouldn't impact the takings clause. I don't know what, the question was what happened with the Barclay Center in Brooklyn where they built the Barclay Center in the middle of a residential area? Yeah. I would assume the local government gets to change those local zoning restrictions. And my guess, and I don't know, is they probably made some change to the local zoning to accommodate the project before they went ahead and built it.
So we're going to make, we're going to wrap this up, and I'm going to just add a little bit. Usually in redevelopment projects, particularly in big redevelopment projects, particularly ones dealing with authorities, usually particularly if, again, a federal government gets involved, usually you have a plan. So again, I don't know this particular case in this particular area, but usually you develop a plan to redevelop an area and you identify public benefit uses, et cetera, along the way. And at one particular point in, once you have that quote plan in place, it's been going through the local process and got buy-in by planning commissions, elected officials, that plan goes into place, and then it empowers the implementation. And that part of that implementation, basically say, hey, we need to get these properties under public ownership or as part of a consolidated redevelopment project. And so you do know a little bit about the future. You don't know all about that in terms of that, and that should factor. And again, good, in fact, question then goes, how much of that redevelopment plan gets factored into the compensation for the properties along the way? So again, that plan shouldn't be in secret so that they didn't surprise it after the fact that they owned it. It was part of the public domain and public discourse, and it should have been factored into the calculation about compensation along the way. How much it was, I can't answer that. But again, redevelopment plans don't happen in secret, and so all sides know about it through that process. We have to get moving here because we're way behind if you want to get out by noon. So if you can wrap it up right now and move forward.
Yep, okay, we're going to move on now to talking about planning and, this is no longer working. What is it, quiet? Does it go into sleep mode or something? There we go. That's working. All right, the state has delegated planning and zoning authority, Joe mentioned this, to both counties and municipalities. As to counties, the how and in which statutes the state delegates planning and zoning depends on what form of government, governance your locality has adopted. Charter counties and code counties, the authorities set forth a local government article, formerly Article 25A and 25B. Non-charter counties, we're talking Division One of the land use article, and Prince George's County, Prince George's and Montgomery's County, it's Division Two of the land use article. Keep in mind, though, that these divisions are not absolute. There are provisions in Division One of the land use article that apply to charter counties and to Baltimore City, and the local government article includes certain provisions that relate to municipalities as well. And it's a complicated area here. The Court of Appeals often says that the task of tracing the statutory basis for planning and zoning in Maryland is very complex, and recodification did not help at all with that. So it's important to know which form of governance your county has adopted. You've seen the slide earlier. Joe showed it. The green ones are charter counties, the blue ones are commissioner counties. And when I say charter county, I mean charter and code home rule. Those are pretty much the same in terms of the scope of their local authority. They're a little bit different because basically the history was in the early 20th century, the Constitution allowed for local governments to adopt a charter, essentially a local constitution to take over home rule powers. That proved over time to be a very onerous process, and very few counties did it. So in the 1960s, the rule was changed so that you could do a workaround, effectively accomplish home rule without adopting a local constitution, and that's called code home rule. They're kind of lumped together as charter counties because the difference here being that charter counties and code home rule counties have much greater powers to legislate and regulate in the local sphere, and the General Assembly, simultaneously, has much less power. In commissioner counties have much less power than charter counties, and the General Assembly has more power. All right, here, oh, question. All right, here, oh, question. The question is, am I aware of an instance where a county has gone charter and then gone back to commissioner? I'm not aware of an instance where that's happened. I know, I would not think so. They might have to, you know, they'd have to change their constitution. It might be again, a very laborious process, but I don't think there's a restriction on that. Here's just a list of, if you don't like looking at the map, you can look at where your county is and it'll tell you whether you're charter, code home rule and/or commissioner. All right, municipalities also have planning and zoning authority. That's in local government article, sections on the screen and land use article, Division One. Municipal authority, planning and zoning authority applies only within municipal boundaries. Seems reasonable, including areas that are annexed and it can't conflict with the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission or the Washington Suburban Sanitation Commission. Here's a map of the municipalities in Maryland, 157 of them, all counties except for two have them. Howard and Baltimore County don't have any municipalities in them. When I say municipalities, it's kind of a term of art. It's incorporated municipalities. There are unincorporated towns that don't qualify as municipalities for purposes of land use, delegation of land use. But once you incorporate as a municipality, you get that delegation of local land use powers. Now with that delegation of authority comes certain strings. You've got to adopt a comprehensive plan and that comprehensive plan has to be consistent or that the zoning has to be consistent with that comprehensive plan. And that plan has to implement the state's 12 planning visions, things like planning for growth areas, adequate infrastructure and environmental protection. Now zoning, some zoning basics. Zoning occurs by the enactment of an ordinance. Its purpose is to, as we talked earlier about Euclid, Euclid case and the police power underpinnings of local land use. It's to promote health and safety, safe neighborhoods, what have you, regulates density, building height and bulk. Now there's two types of uses that are provided for in a zoning ordinance. There's uses that are by right and there are conditional uses. And we'll talk a little bit about conditional uses going forward. Comprehensive zoning is a legislative act. And what that means is the local legislative body enacts, it's not property specific. You're not having a trial or anything like that, developing a factual record with respect to a particular property. You're just legislating throughout the jurisdiction. And because of that, courts give it an awful lot of deference. It's, it's very difficult to challenge comprehensive zoning. Now, the requirements that do apply though, is that it has to cover a large area, has to be the product of careful study and controls or directs all uses of land in substantially all of the jurisdiction. Again, the distinction here is between broad legislative action and narrow property specific and we'll go into that a little bit more. Some zonings do, some zoning do's and don't, sorry to spot zoning is generally not permitted. It's not always illegal though. Now, a spot zoning, as the graphic sort of suggests, is where you're setting out to do your comprehensive zoning. You've got a district that is going to be zoned residential and you put in the middle one commercial lot or one commercial area. Well, that could be a problem if it's inconsistent, like if, if you put a quarry in the middle of a residential district and that would be inconsistent with residential use and it's really being done just to benefit the owner of that property, well, that's a problem. But if you put a grocery store, allow a grocery store in the middle of a residential district, that's probably going to be okay because it's not really inconsistent with the residential use around it because people need to go to the grocery store to get what they need. And it's not really being done just for the owner's private interest. That owner might be, might be interested and might get a benefit from it, but so would everyone around it. So this is just a restriction on ensuring that local zoning power is not exercised in a way to just benefit private interests as opposed to the general good. Contract zoning is always prohibited. And contract zoning is where you have an agreement outside of the public zoning process between the zoning authority and a property owner about how land is to be zoned. This is prohibited for some of these same things. It, it, it permits special privilege, someone's got a connection that allows them to get that more favorable zoning. It just disrupts the comprehensive nature of the plan and the uniformity of the zoning within the district. And as the court has said somewhat inscrutably, impermissibly derogates the exercise of the municipality's powers. What that means is contracts away the municipality's zoning powers. And that's a general principle of law that the government can't contract away its governmental powers. So contract zoning runs afoul of that as well. Question in the front? I think both. I, I'm not seeing a case on that, but all of the policies that lie behind it, the question is, does that contract have to be in writing or can you have it in a kind of a back room deal? I think the restriction would apply to both. You might have difficulty approving whether there's a contract in the back room deal thing. It's much easier to prove that when you got something in writing, but if you could approve it, I think the same restriction would apply. Peace. Oop, another question. You, not if, if you're doing it within the larger zoning process. So you're saying, okay, we're now going to, we're going to open up a piecemeal zoning, which we're about to talk to, talk about, in order to accommodate this landowner's desired use of the property. That wouldn't run afoul of the, the restriction on contract zoning. That, you only run afoul of that is when you're, you're doing zoning outside of the formal zoning process, which is a very public process. You're going in a back room and signing a contract that the public doesn't get to see, doesn't have any input into. So, but moving on to piecemeal zoning, you've done your comprehensive plan, you haven't spot zoned, you haven't created that little spot in the middle of your district, but now that landowner comes in and says, I want to put a quarry here or I want to put a grocery store. That is an example of, if you were to allow that, would be a piecemeal zone. As the slide says, it's a parcel specific change in zoning classification that occurs after the comprehensive zoning has been done. Now, it can be okay, but only if it's based on either a mistake of fact in the original zoning or comp plan. So just a mistake was made in the assumptions that lie behind the zoning. Or if there is evidence of a substantial change in the character of a neighborhood that was kind of not anticipated when the zoning occurred. But if you can't meet those and, you know, the factual record shows that the government understood what was going on in this area and how it was going to be developing over the next few years when it did its comprehensive zoning ordinance and decided that these, this area would be purely residential or what have you, then you can't get a piecemeal, you can't, this will be an impermissible piecemeal zoning. One other point is that even if you qualify for that, you can establish either a mistake or a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, the government is not obligated to grant you the piecemeal zoning. It's just a restriction on the government's ability to grant piecemeal zoning. Question? Well, one might be that the, the government zones an area on the belief that a major roadway is going in. And so they provide for commercial development along that roadway where it's going to be going in and residential development elsewhere. And then it turns out they were wrong and that the road is going on the completely other side of the district. So it would no longer make sense to have the commercial district on the other side because there's no major road there. It makes sense to have it over here. So that would be an example where the government would say, you know, we built this whole zoning decision on the assumption that the road would be over there. Turns out it's over here. So we can go back in and do a piecemeal zoning and change those residential areas alongside the new location of the road to provide for that commercial use that we thought we were providing for on the other side. All right. Now let's talk a little bit about conditional uses. Now this is a term that also goes by the name special exceptions. You see them both used a lot. Special exceptions is, I think, kind of a misnomer because the thing about conditional uses is that they are actually provided for in the zoning ordinance itself. It's, you have uses that are allowed by right and then there are uses that you are allowed under certain conditions, conditional uses. And you call them special exceptions, it makes it sound like it's almost a variance or something. That's, you know, a special thing, it's an exception to the rule, but it's actually baked into the zoning ordinance itself. It's just a matter of you qualify, you satisfy the conditions for that conditional use. Now the requirements that apply to it, again, it's identified in the zoning as being permissible only under certain conditions, has to be compatible with the neighborhood and further the purpose of the proposed use and shall further and not be contrary to, to the local comprehensive plan. An example might be, you know, a dentist office in a residential area where, you know, it's not, it's not really inconsistent with the residential character of the neighborhood. People need to go to dentists unfortunately from time to time. So that's something that you see. The other restriction though, on it, is that the effect of the, of the adverse effect of the conditional use cannot be unique or different from the effect that would, it would have if located elsewhere in the district. And what does that mean? That means that if you're putting this conditional use on a lot where through some quirk of geography or the character of the neighborhood or what have you, it's going to have an outsized adverse impact on surrounding uses than if it were anywhere else. That there's just something about that location within the district that would be, you couldn't, wouldn't qualify for a conditional use there. And, you know, an example that, kind of the converse of that example is, is a recent court case where folks challenged a funeral home as a conditional use in, in a particular district. And the zoning ordinance identified funeral homes as a conditional use and said, went on to say, you know, that had findings about the impacts associated with dust, noise and fumes, that the legislature has concluded that those are not inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. So neighbors sued to enjoin the conditional use on the theory that it's in a predominantly Asian American neighborhood and that with residents who have a cultural aversion to funeral homes, kind of a deeply seeded cultural aversion. And the Court of Appeals said, no, that doesn't count. Now, why doesn't that count? It, it's because we have to go back to zoning being a legislative decision. Here is the government saying, we're going to allow conditional uses, we're going to allow funeral homes on a conditional use and we're recognizing these types of impacts, dust, fumes, noise, as the types of things that we think are acceptable within this district. The fact that the neighbors are challenging, are saying that cultural aversion is what they're worried about, the legislature already ruled that out. Because so, so this is again, this is legislation. The legislative body gets to define the conditional use and the types of impacts that it considers relevant to allowing conditional uses within the district. Variances. Now variances, you're probably familiar with modifications to requirements, restrictions in zoning law concerning density, bulk. Most, I mean, in, in Maryland, we have, variances are typically area variances. And it's a way to allow some flexibility into the, into the zoning process and almost as a safety valve for taking. So if you, someone owns property and because of the way the zoning restrictions work, they can't develop on it. Well, maybe they can get a variance to avoid the train wreck that happens when they come into court and force the government to buy the property. So it's, it's often used as a way to avoid the, you know, running afoul of constitutional restrictions. Now there are restrictions on what qualifies as a variance. It has to be to avoid hardship due to conditions peculiar to the land, to the property itself. The applicant importantly can't create the hardship themselves. And the variance, again, this theme that you hear throughout all of zoning authority, cannot confer special privilege denied to others. Generally speaking, or the land use article only allows for size or area variances and therefore effectively prohibits use variances, which is a variance that would allow, now this name suggests, for use that would not otherwise be allowed under the zoning ordinance. Now that is, that provision is in Division One of the land use article, so it applies only in the six commissioner counties. That said, the limitation is fairly common across Maryland and other counties have similar limitations in their local codes. But where you, use variances are allowed, they are subject to even more strict standard for their availability. Now here's an example that kind of shows you what so you've got an existing barn located on a large lot and a new residence must be placed, the, the pink building to the right is the new residence and it has to be placed a certain distance away from that barn, the calculated MDS distance. Now if you put the house right there outside the calculated MDS distance, you notice that you're in the setback. So you would violate the setback requirement if you were to comply with the MDS so that the owner cannot build a house on that property in compliance with both land use restrictions. So they can get a variance to, for the side setback requirement so they can build the house a little bit closer to the property line than they otherwise would be able to. Now they're not causing the hardship here because that barn, it's an existing lot, that barn's been there. They just have this lot and they're going They just have this lot and they're going to develop it. And because of that proximity of the barn to their property, they can't put their house, you know, right smack in the middle of the property. So this is an example of, of where you could use a, a variance. Now moving on to vesting, vesting is the concept that once a property owner has gotten far enough in the development process, they're essentially immune from changes of the law that would prevent them from developing as they were previously offered. Now, why is this important? It's important because vested rights enjoy significant protections under Maryland law. Maryland takings jurisprudence pretty much follows the Supreme Courts, you know, gives the same protection to private property law. Big difference though, when we're talking about vested rights. Maryland has a specific constitutional provision about vested rights and as a result, the Court of Appeals has identified that as an area where they're going to be more protective of property rights than the federal government does. So, pardon? The question is, in, in the gentleman's, now the question is, in the gentleman's jurisdiction, you don't have vested rights unless you have a site plan that has been submitted and approved. And that's correct because Maryland is what is called a late vesting state. You have to, in order to vest rights in Maryland, you have to follow existing applicable law and obtaining a development right or permit and have made changes on the property manifesting commencement of work. Now the difference between a late vesting state and an early vesting state is that there are some states out there where you just, all you need is a building permit. You don't have to do work under that permit. There are some states out there where you just need like approval of a preliminary plan or something like that, not an actual permit, but that is enough to vest your rights. But in Maryland is qualifies as a late vesting states, you need both the permit and to undertake a little bit of work under that permit. And that's say, it serves kind of a public notice. When people see that you're working, putting in footers and whatnot on, on your property in reliance on a permit, they know that it's a done deal and you can't change the, the law to try to block it. The question is, what happens if the property owner didn't follow existing applicable law? Would that defeat vesting and is that ever brought up in court? Yes, it would defeat vesting if you could establish that it, like if they built illegally, for example, if they just went ahead and started building the property or building the building without any type of authorization, you wouldn't vest your rights by doing that. You need them both. You need the properly issued permit and commencing work. Now, good question, if the government made a mistake in how they are, you know, interpreting or applying their own regulate zoning ordinance and the landowner is guiltless, you know, they've just been saying, hey, you, you've done everything you've told me to, you gave me my permit and now it turns out that permit is invalid. You know, I don't know the answer to that. It seems like an inequitable decision, but I'm not familiar with a case that fits that, that mold. Okay, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna go through boards of appeals very quickly. They're required for non-charter commissioner counties, municipalities authorized in charter and code counties. In non-charter counties, there spells out exactly what they have to, how they consist of, three members, three-year terms, charter and code counties, again, a lot more authority, a lot more discretion to set your own rules, but they're all pretty much the same here. They hear, they, they decide appeals where an error comes out of the local land use process. We talked about land use zoning as being a legislative decision. If someone has a problem with that, it comes up, it comes up through the board of appeals process so that they can take testimony, hear from witnesses, get facts and build a factual record about the specific property involved. Very different from the legislative zoning process. They hear applications from variances, all of them do. And in charter and code counties, they can hear a lot more because again, charter and code counties have a lot more discretion of defining their own local powers. Again, board of, the rules of procedure are very trial-like. They have to be, they're subject to the open meetings act, they're recorded, testimony under oath. This is more like a, a trial-type proceeding than zoning, which is a legislative act. Again, more rules that make sure that the, the board of appeals process is open and that the public can see the, you know, the deliberation and the findings and conclusions that the Board of Appeals decides. Talked about it being quasi-judicial. They are subject to review by a court in a way that legislative decisions are very difficult to appeal, whereas Board of Appeals decisions are automatically appealed to court if other, if either party wishes to do so. Questions? Yeah, so the question is, Board of Appeals are hearing cases involving requests for extensions of time. What extension of time is too long such that if a developer, you know, gets approval and then sits on its hand for 10 years and its permits lapse, can they come in and get an extension of time? You know, sir, I, I just don't know the answer to that. I don't know if there is a bright line rule.
If I've got a conditional use for a hairdresser salon in my house and I try to sell that, I would be cautious about selling and representing, oh, you can go ahead and have a hairdresser salon here, that's part of it and you add that to the value. That's not necessarily true. Those conditions don't automatically transfer. Well, what, you know, they, I would advise that person, go back and get your own conditional approval so that you can have your hairdresser salon in your house. So again, those are things that are part of the zoning administrator's duties along the way. But again, most of the time, your regulations should specify the life of that approval. And if it's not clearly specified in your ordinance, I'd encourage you to talk to your town attorney about clarifying those approvals along the way. Again, each community is different, so we can't give you perfect answers on anything. Happy to talk to you later on about details.
Right. Moving on, because we do have to speed things up, there are restrictions. Board of Appeals members cannot have ex parte communications with, with the party that's appearing before it, kind of a common sense thing in a way. If that happens, if you run into someone in the donut shop and you talk about a matter, you've got to disclose that to all parties and summarize the communication on the record. I'm skipping over this question slide because we've been getting questions. Now we're moving on to ethics. Now all state or all local jurisdictions must have, well, the state ethics law prohibits improprieties and appearances of impropriety and it's, as you can imagine, this purpose is to ensure fair, fair dealings by people, public officials. Now counties and municipalities must enact provisions on conflicts of interest, final financial disclosure and lobbying. Those restrictions must be similar to state law. They don't have to be identical. If they need to be kind of tailored to local circumstances, that's permissible, but they have to be similar to state restrictions. Conflicts of interest, you can't hold outside employment that it would impair your impartiality or independence of judgment. You can't use the prestige of office for private gain. So, you know, if you're a planning commissioner and someone has applied for a wetlands permit and MDE is holding a public hearing, you don't go up there and say, and testify, I'm a member of the planning commission and this permit should be issued, it's the right thing. You're kind of invoking your office in favor of a private person and that's impermissible. You can't use confidential information acquired in your official duties for the benefit of the other, anyone else, or participate in a matter in which you have a legal or economic interest. Types of interests that we're talking about here is you have an interest in a business that is appearing before the, your agency, you're, are employed by a business that is negotiating a contract with the local jurisdiction. There's also restrictions on contingent fees. These restrictions also apply to you and certain close family members. Spouse, parent, child, siblings. Also you can't solicit or accept gifts of more than $20 from any person who's regulated by or seeks to do business with your agency after you've left employment. You can't act as the paid representative of another in connection with a matter that you've participated significantly. So it's not a complete bar, but if you worked on a matter while in the planning commission and then leave government service, you cannot be hired as a paid representative on that specific matter. Okay. When do you have to recuse yourself as a, a planning commissioner? Well, if your spouse has a development project that's coming before the commission for site plan approval, you're going to have to recuse yourself for that. You can't participate in any matter and you, in any way and you have to, disclosure is not enough. So remember ex parte communications, their disclosure is going to be enough. You probably aren't going to have to recuse yourself if someone just has a conversation with you at the donut shop. But if you've got your spouse appearing to, you know, with a development projects before the planning commission, no amount of disclosure is going to be sufficient. Any questions on that? I think we're done then. Oh, that's right, there's a test. Okay, you are tested. All right. Police power is choose all that apply. Authority to regulate, protect public health, safety and welfare? Sure. The basis for zoning and other land use regulations? Yep, we talked about that. Limited to the power to arrest a criminal suspect? No, that is an exercise of the police power, but it's not limited to that. Delegated by the state to counties and municipalities? Yes. This is not an all above, it's A, B and D. Development rights vest when construction is complete? Well, they will have vested by then, but they vest earlier than that. The applicant obtains government approval on a preliminary plan? No, that would be in an early vesting state. Maryland's a late vesting state. Applicant has a building permit and has made visible changes to the property there by giving notice to the public. Ding 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 ding, that's the right answer for vested rights, public notices printed. Yes, yeah. A regulatory taking occurs when your lawyer says so? That's not a bad answer because it's really hard to tell what is going to constitute a regulatory taking, but no, it's not. Use is not permitted under current rules? Well, not necessarily. That could end up in a takings, but it's not necessarily a taking. Regulation removes all economic value in a property? Yes. If it's all, yes. When it is determined that a variance is needed? No, a variance is a way to avoid taking, but the fact that a variance is needed doesn't necessarily mean that there is. Non-constitutional exaction occurs when the exaction has nothing to do with the governmental purpose for the exaction? Yeah, that fails the rational nexus test. The impact of the exaction far exceeds the governmental purpose of the exaction? Yep, that violates the rough proportionality test. There is both a rational nexus and rough proportionality between the exaction and the governmental purpose for the exaction. That's the test for an appropriate condition. It's not an exaction. Hearing before a board of appeals must be recorded, be held in the evening, have testimony taken under oath and include the recorded vote or failure to vote of each member. We kind of skimmed over this pretty quickly, but it would be A, C and D. They often are held in the evening, but they don't have to. Counties and municipalities must enact public official ethics rules for the following. Lobbying? Yeah, we mentioned that, we didn't really talk about it. Financial disclosure? Yep. And conflicts of interest? We talked a fair bit about that. There's where all of the above is the right answer. Ex parte communications from a party to a board of appeals member should be encouraged to gain additional information for decision-making? No. Always require recusal? No, we talked about that. Must be disclosed to all parties and summarized on the record. That's the right answer. Should be kept confidential under one or more executive privileges. There are some privileges apply, but they're not going to apply to someone who's outside of your agency. So that's it.